State Conference of the NAACP versus Fayette County Board of County Commissioners. And Mr. Tyson is here for the appellants, Mr. Aiden is here for the appellees, and once you're situated at table, counsel table, Mr. Tyson. I have an initial question to ask you when you come up here. And just for housekeeping purposes, is Holland and Knight involved in this case in any way?
No, Your Honor, Holland and Knight is not involved.
Okay, thank you. You may proceed.
Thank you, Your Honor, and may it please the Court. My name is Brian Tyson, and with Ms. Lewis and Mr. Strickland of our law firm, we represent the county defendants in this case, which is the Board of Commissioners and its members, the Board of Elections and its director. Many Section 2 cases have complicated facts, but the application of the law in related to racial predominance in this case is clear. When the District Court granted summary judgment to the plaintiffs, it made a number of errors of law, but the primary error that it made was by either refusing to consider or ignoring the boundary segment analysis, which was clear evidence of racial predominance on the plaintiff's illustrative plan. When an individual sits down to draw a district on a computer, they're faced with the geography of the jurisdiction, the county, the precincts, then they begin to click in the district, and as they do that, the computer selects them, shades them, and then presents a number on the side that shows the total population, the racial makeup of the district, other information about the geography as the person is taking that action. In this case, when Mr. Cooper, the plaintiff's expert, sat down to draw the illustrative plan, he admitted that he tried to draw a map that was majority-minority using whole precincts, and he couldn't do that. So he had to drop down to the census block level, which usually only contain a handful of individuals and are the smallest level of data. Only racial data and population data is available at that level. Mr. Cooper then admitted that he turned on two important pieces of information, the total population of each census block and the racial makeup of that census block, the percentage African-American. So each block displayed that information, and then he proceeded to click in the district. The boundary segment analysis that the District Court refused or ignored showed that in every case when Mr. Cooper had to decide which population went in or out of that district, he always included population that was higher in African-American percentage and always excluded population that was higher in white percentage. That evidence of racial predominance was never considered, and it's very relevant to the consideration of this Section 2 case, because at the first prong of jingles, a plaintiff must demonstrate they have a remedy and that the minority community is geographically compact. The Supreme Court has repeatedly stated in both Vera and in Hunt versus Cromarty that a boundary segment analysis is what demonstrates racial predominance, is strong evidence of racial predominance in the redistricting context, and yet the District Court didn't consider that. Racial predominance then, that failure then infected the remainder of the District Court's analysis because it then assumed that there was a geographically compact minority community. When a minority community can only be captured through racial predominance, that demonstrates first that there's no geographically compact community, because...
So your argument is that the court improperly weighed the Senate factors, right?
That's one of the arguments, Your Honor. First, we would argue that the first jingles prong was not met by the plaintiffs.
The compactness requirement.
Yes, the compactness and numerosity.
All right. Well, the District Court's order seems to be pretty comprehensive and thorough with respect to that element of gingles. Your argument is that the court improperly weighed the statistical and expert testimony?
Your Honor, our argument is that the District Court completely ignored the most relevant evidence that the U.S. Supreme Court has said is most relevant in the racial question of racial predominance, the boundary segment analysis. We presented it to the Court repeatedly in our briefs, and the District Court never even mentioned it in its order. And the District Court appears to have been under the misimpression that the way to find a geographically compact community was to have this weighing of traditional redistricting principles, as opposed to recognizing the authority from the Supreme Court that indicates that traditional principles will appear in some places, even on a racially predominant plan.
So there are genuine issues of material fact in the case, and we ought to remand for a bench trial. Is that your argument?
That's our alternative argument, Your Honor. Our first argument is that the plaintiffs failed to carry their burden on prong one because the racial predominance shows that there is no geographically compact minority community, and because the racial predominance shows it's not a remedy the Court can order.
If we were here after a bench trial, your argument would have to be that those findings of the District Court with respect to compactness are clearly erroneous?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay. And you can make the argument that the findings are clearly erroneous?
We believe we would prevail under the clearly erroneous standard, but we think the proper standard here is de novo because of summary judgment. The District Court made errors of law. It misinterpreted the relevant legal precedents related to racial predominance and what constitutes geographic compactness of the minority community.
Okay. Is the record fully developed?
The record is fully developed with the exception of there was no live testimony. There were experts, there were depositions taken, but then the District Court never held a hearing on the issues.
So if the case is remanded, discovery is complete, the only thing that would take place is that the Court would just conduct a bench trial based on the record that we have before us?
Yes, Your Honor, but with live testimony, and that would be the opportunity to weigh the experts and the credibility and to hear the issues.
So your strongest argument is that summary judgment was premature, that the Court should have had a bench trial. Is that right, or am I mistaken about that?
No, Your Honor, I think that the District Court improperly granted summary judgment under prong one because there wasn't a dispute. The plaintiffs never disputed the boundary segment analysis and never disputed the evidence of racial predominance that was there. The problem was the District Court didn't correctly apply the legal precedents about what that then meant. And so there was never a dispute of a material fact regarding the racial predominance as demonstrated by the boundary segment analysis.
So if the case went back for a bench trial, there's nothing else to be developed other than for the Court to correctly reevaluate the compactness element of gingles versus Thornburg?
Yes, Your Honor, and then also to determine under the totality of the circumstances whether, as this Court requires, racial bias drives the community and results in the dilution of minority voting strength.
The Court didn't already make that determination in the summary judgment?
It did, Your Honor, but again, there was conflicting testimony on the totality standard. So for us, on the first prong of jingles, we believe that this Court can reverse and grant summary judgment to us, because, to the county, because the Court, under the legal precedent and the undisputed facts, should have found the plaintiffs failed to carry their burden under prong one. But in the totality question, there was conflicting testimony about many of the totality factors. And even in that case, the District Court didn't weigh the totality factors correctly because it found that this community in Fayette County is not driven by racial bias. There's not a history of discrimination unique to Fayette County. There's not racial appeals in campaigns.
It's hard, don't you think it's hard to make that argument when you take all of the Senate factors into consideration? There's never been an African-American elected to the Board of County Commissioners in Fayette County, even though seven have run and have not been elected?
Your Honor, the District Court actually cited a dissent in this case for the theory that, dissent from this Court for the theory that that's the most important factor to address, but it's actually not too surprising when you consider that in Fayette County's history, up until the year 2000, the African-American population was less than 5% in the county. And no African-American candidate has run since 2006 for a Board of Commissioner position. So despite the growth in the African-American population over time, there had not been African-Americans elected, but that's not too surprising. There's no evidence that that was on account of race or color, just because of the fact that there was not a significant African-American population up until very recently in the county. And no African-Americans had run as that population continued to grow. Another issue that could support summary judgment on our behalf is the numerosity requirement. So the District Court relied on the any-part-black number for determination that the minority community was a majority, but every other measurement of the African-American population in the illustrative plan was under 50%. And the any-part-black number includes individuals who report as African-American and white, African-American and Hispanic, African-American and Asian. And so at the very least, what the District Court appears to have done is allowed the creation of a coalition district because individuals who are African-American are not a majority, only individuals who report as African-American and some other race.
What difference does it make if they identify as African-American? Why should it make a difference if they also identify as a member of another group?
It matters for Section 2, Your Honor, because Bartlett requires the minority group in question to be able to elect its candidate of choice without assistance from others. And so when you have a minority group that's coalescing with other minority groups, it's getting assistance from other minority groups to be elected.
Not if the people identify themselves also as African-American. I mean, how does that, how does that in any way violate that principle?
It violates that principle because people who are African-American and Hispanic, as we see for Section 2 purposes, the Supreme Court indicated in Ashcroft that in a Section 2 context, it's helpful to have a comparison of different racial groups, in which case the single-race numbers that the Department of Justice starts with is the better measure in a Section 2 case. In this case, the District Court kind of blew past that. There's no evidence of cohesion of Hispanic voters and African-American voters.
I thought there was evidence in this record upon which the District Court relied to conclude that you could draw a district in Fayette County, Georgia, with a population of 50.23% African-Americans without crossover voting. There's enough African-Americans of voting age in the voting population to comprise a bare mathematical majority. Am I mistaken about that?
It found that that was correct as to the any-part-black number, which includes the multi-race reporting. As to the single-race reporting or the non-Hispanic-black number, it didn't find that. And a significant, important point on this front is the plaintiffs never presented a plan that was over 50% that was equally populated. So all the districts they drew were underpopulated, and the reason why that matters is the margin is so razor-thin at 35 people over a majority that any census block going in or out is relevant to the question of whether or not you're over a majority in that case.
Aren't there some cases out there that say a mathematical majority, a bare mathematical majority, is sufficient to meet the numerosity requirement?
Your Honor, every case the District Court cited for that didn't involve something that's as razor-thin as this. And in the case that's the closest, Pope, out of the Second Circuit, they found in that case there was a non-Hispanic-black number that was over 50%. So Pope withheld ruling on that question. One thing that's interesting about this Court and the Supreme Court is every time there's a consideration of the word "majority" in, for this prong of jingles, there's always a modifier in front of it, a sufficient majority, an electoral majority, a working majority. And the reason why is, as the Court said in Bartlett, there has to be the minority community able to succeed on its own without assistance from others. So, Your Honor, we would ask this Court to reverse the District Court grant of summary judgment. We think that you are able to grant summary judgment to the county because of the failure to, the plaintiffs to carry prong one of jingles on both geographic compactness and numerosity under the law. But barring that, we think there needs at least be a trial on the issues of racial predominance and geographic compactness if you don't grant summary judgment in the county's favor.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Tyson.
Thank you, Your Honor.
We'll hear from Ms. Aiden.
May it please the Court. I am Leah Aiden, and along with my co-counsel, Ryan Haygood and Neil Bradley, I represent plaintiffs who are appellees in this Court. Many of our clients are in this courtroom today, as are members of the community in Fayette. Your Honors, despite what you will hear today, this is a straightforward challenge under Section 2 of the Voting Rights Act to Fayette's nearly two-century-old reliance on at-large voting to maintain an all-white Board of Commissioners and Board of Education. Prior to last month's remedial district-based elections, no black candidate had ever been elected to serve on either board, even though at least 12 black candidates, Republicans and Democrats, had run for these important local bodies. In this case, defendants have no evidence to contradict that racially polarized voting is stark in Fayette County. White voters simply do not vote en masse for black, the candidates preferred by black voters. And because of that, the plaintiffs and the District Court were allowed to consider race along with traditional redistricting principles, both to establish Section 2 liability and to remedy it. The District Court found, and the record reflects, that race did not predominate in Mr. Cooper's development of the illustrative plan.
All right, you may have a strong case on the merits based on the District Court's decision, but I wonder if you will address the procedural posture of this case. It's very unusual for a Section 2 case to be decided on summary judgment. It usually takes place after a bench trial. And their strongest argument is that summary judgment was premature. So you may have a strong case on the merits, but I guess the concern that I would have is it's very difficult for the Court to weigh the Senate factors against the evidence in this case, given the summary judgment standard. What do you have to say about that?
Your Honors, we do acknowledge that Section 2 cases are rarely decided on summary judgment, but just recently, in Montez versus the City of Yakima, the eastern district of Washington granted summary judgment to minority plaintiffs after they had established each of the jingles prerequisites and that five totality of the, five Senate factors weighed in favor of the minority plaintiffs.
That's the only case out there, and that's a different circuit. We're in the 11th Circuit.
So, and my second point in response, Your Honor, is that this case, though straightforward, is exceptional in that the defendants have no contradictory evidence that racially polarized voting, jingles 2 and 3, which are the essence of the vote, of a vote dilution claim. The circuit has recognized that in Nipper versus Smith and Davis versus Childs, that satisfying jingles 2, which is not in dispute in this case, is the essence of a vote dilution claim. It also is the basis for the totality analysis that the Court considered. Two of the key Senate factors are the existence of racially polarized voting and the lack of any black electives in the history of Fayette County. Standing on those two Senate factors alone, the Court could have found that the totality weighed in plaintiff's favor. In Bone Shirt versus Hazelteen and Clark versus Calhoun County, those two Senate factors were sufficient for the Court to find that the totality pointed in the same direction that it points in this case, which is that black voters, under at-large voting, in combination with racially polarized voting, have not less of an opportunity, they have had no opportunity to participate in the political process. And the Court having five, not only had those two key Senate factors, it had five Senate factors, three additional others, which pointed in favor of the plaintiffs. Defendants raise minor, non-material arguments with respect to the totality of the circumstances. So for example, Mr. Tyson mentioned that there was no evidence specific to Fayette County. This Court in Davis versus Childs was looking at specific circuits in Florida. It talked about Florida's general history of discrimination and did not have evidence specific to the jurisdiction.
Which case is that now?
Davis versus Childs, which is a judicial case. And there are a number of other cases where the Court looked to, like here, Georgia's DeJurey judicially-recognized history of discrimination, including the use of the very at-large electoral method that we challenged here because it has denied black voters in other places in Georgia and here in Fayette, of black voters' opportunity to participate in the political process. I'd also, if I may, like to address what the Board of Commissioners and the Board of Education attempt to do, which is to term this case, which is about racial discrimination in voting against black voters, into an equal protection case. The District Court cited the, again, Davis versus Childs, and also Lulab versus Perry, in which the Supreme Court recognized that Section 2 cases are distinct from equal protection cases, and for purposes of Section 2, plaintiffs need establish what they have done in this case, which is a sufficiently large, geographically compact community under jingles 1. Sufficiently large is without a doubt in dispute here. There's no evidence to contradict that our 50.22 illustrative plan satisfies Bartlett versus Strickland's bright-line standard. In Sensley versus Alberton, the District Court accepted that a 50.1 and 50.5 district satisfied jingles 1 numerosity requirement.
Well, keep in mind now, we're in the 11th Circuit. We're not in these other circuits. And quite frankly, it's hard to get a Section 2 violation determination by the District Court in the 11th Circuit. And you've read our opinion in Thompson versus Clay County, at least one member of this circuit is of the view that a bare mathematical majority is insufficient to satisfy the numerosity requirement. You don't think that the plaintiffs in this case are better off in the long run with a determination on the merits after a bench trial rather than on summary judgment?
Well, the Thompson versus Clay case, Your Honor, was a pre-Bartlett decision, and Bartlett established a bright-line rule which plaintiffs satisfied. And plaintiffs would, the outcome would be the same at trial because, again, the underlying facts of this case are not in dispute.
The outcome may be the same at trial, but you're in a stronger position from a procedural standpoint. Wouldn't, would you dispute that?
I would concede that, Your Honor, but I would also strongly remind this Court that at summary judgment, the defendants, neither defendants have contradicted the underlying facts that plaintiffs have been able to establish at summary judgment. So in addition to the district being sufficiently large, it is also geographically compact by all measures.
So the defense did not say that it was not compact? There was no expert saying it wasn't compact?
The Board of Commissioners expert, Mr. Morgan, says it's non-compact, adopting many of the arguments that are...
Isn't that an issue of fact then on compactness and essential to the jingles 1 consideration?
What we argue is that the, the points raised by the Board of Commissioners expert are not towards the underlying facts of the district at issue, that they have no evidence to dispute that black voters are a community of interest in northern Fayette County. They share houses of worship, they send their kids to the same school together, they share the same parks and recreation facilities. The, the community of interest is borne out also by statistical measures of compactness, which plaintiffs argue over, but there are no underlying facts in dispute that the compactness measures of this district compare favorably to the then-existing districts in Fayette County, as well as to the other districts that it was compared to in Georgia, both state and local redistricting. So for example, District 5 in the illustrative plan is more compact than 25% of legislative districts in Georgia. It is as compact or more compact than 23 of the 25 county commission and school board districts that it was compared to. They cannot contradict that evidence. Again, they also cannot contradict jingles prongs 2 and 3, which is, again, the essence of a vote dilution claim, and they have...
But you still have to have jingles 1.
Still have to have jingles 1. And I also fail to neglect that they cannot dispute that black people live in northern Fayette County, and the record evidence points in that direction, that black voters live in the two municipalities of Tyrone and Fayetteville. Those two cities are just a short 3.5-mile jog distance from one another, and they're close to the nexus of the other black community in Fayette. Those basic facts are not contradicted by the record, and there are arguments that are being made. And most of the arguments, if I may return, go back to the defendants trying to make this into an equal protection case. The jingles 1 standard satisfies constitutional standards, and until such time as the Court considers a remedy, that is the appropriate time by which the Court assesses whether race rather than traditional redistricting principles were predominated. And importantly in this case, the District Court considered that and found that race did not predominate, that Mr. Cooper developed the illustrative plan with the goal of responding to illegal vote dilution in Fayette County, with creating a majority-minority district that is sufficiently large, that is geographically compact, and he applied each of the traditional redistricting principles. And the record reflects that each of those traditional redistricting principles were considered, such that he was able to develop a sufficiently large and geographically compact I'd also like to address the argument that the any-part-black category was the wrong category to use. As the Court noted in Georgia versus Ashcroft, in a case such as this, where we're dealing with the interest of one, the voting rights of one community, the any-part-black category is appropriate to use. In the 2011 redistricting in Georgia, this state used the any-part-black category because it is an appropriate category to use now that the census allows people to self-identify as black. This is not a coalition case, and there is no evidence that the black Hispanic, the black, this is not a case of about the black community joining with the Hispanic community to create a district that is sufficiently large. These are self-identified black voters, and there is no evidence to the contrary to suggest that the any-part-black category was inappropriate to use. I would like to return, just in my remaining time, to this idea that this case, though straightforward, is exceptional because, again, illegal vote dilution existed in Fayette County. Racially polarized voting was stark and uncontested, and therefore, both the plaintiffs and the District Court were allowed to consider race, and they were allowed to do so within the confines of the law while balancing each of the traditional redistricting principles. Absent their ability to do that, the at-large voting in combination with racially polarized voting would continue to deny black voters of any representation, responsive representation on either of these local boards, despite the best efforts of the black community to run and to have their candidates elected to those important local bodies. And again, that evidence is without any contradiction by the defendants. I would also like to follow up on one point that Mr. Tyson made, which is this idea that this bare majority might somehow become ineffective. They have put on no evidence that that district is not effective, and in fact, this past November's election, in which black voters, for the first time in Fayette's history, were allowed to elect their candidates of choice, suggests that a bare majority can be an effective district in Fayette County.
Is that, is that something that we can take into consideration based on this record?
It is not, Your Honor, but I, the Court can consider that there is no evidence to dispute that they have, that plaintiffs have satisfied the bright-line rule and that there is no evidence to suggest that the district will not be an effective district. They have not put on such contradictory evidence.
So we can't factor that, we can't take that into consideration? The fact that an African-American has been elected to the Board of County Commissioners in Fayette County?
It's not part of the record that the Court considered at summary judgment, but what the Court did...
Well, I guess what I'm asking is, we can't take that into consideration, can we? Okay.
But again, you can consider that there is no contradictory evidence that we have satisfied the bare majority Bartlett versus Strickland bright-line rule.
Because we're bound by the record, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And the record, once again, has not been contradicted on the, on the essential facts, the material facts that plaintiffs must establish in order to satisfy a Section 2 proof. Similarly, the totality of the circumstances all pointed towards the fact that black voters had less opportunity than other members of the electorate in Fayette County to elect their candidates of choice, in addition to the two key Senate factors that plaintiffs established. And again, none of, there's no set number of Senate factors that plaintiffs need to prove, but they identified two of the key Senate factors, they identified three additional Senate factors that weighed in their favor. And all of the arguments that the defendants put towards the Senate factors are not material to the underlying facts, which pointed in the direction, once again, that black voters have less opportunity under at-large voting in combination with racially polarized voting in Fayette County. And absent the type of district-based remedial plan that the Court appropriately ordered, black voters would continue to be denied access to the political process in Fayette County, and therefore, this Court should affirm the District Court's decisions.
All right, thank you, Ms. Aiden. We'll hear again from Mr. Tyson. I'm trying to figure out, Mr. Tyson, is compactness under Section 2 the same as compactness under equal protection?
No, Your Honor, it's not.
Okay.
And the challenge is they're related, and so a lot of times, the way you look at compactness of a minority community is by looking at the district that captures that community. And what's happened in this case is the District Court has basically said, you must go out and manufacture a community through the use of racial predominance. And I thought it was instructive that Ms. Aiden still continues to ignore the existence of the boundary segment analysis that shows that that's what Mr. Cooper did in this plan. Just briefly on some of the other points, there was, Ms. Aiden mentioned, we had no contrary evidence on racial polarization. There's testimony in the record that Fayette County is an overwhelmingly Republican county, and African-American voters vote for Democrats in the county. And so, yes, an African-American was elected in this last November, which this Court can't consider, but a Democrat was elected. That's what the effect of this plan was. In response to Ms. Aiden's suggestion that for, you know, two centuries, the Fayette County Board of Commissioners has used this to...
Though, in fairness, I mean, one of the, one of the pieces of evidence also shows that when five different candidates were running, four of whom were African-American, two of them were Republicans, and no African-Americans won.
That's correct, Your Honor, but the evidence also showed that the white candidate in that race who was successful was endorsed by the then-sheriff, who was a very popular local elected official. Several of the African-American candidates didn't, didn't even campaign for office, had been switching parties back and forth between Democrat and Republican. So there are issues that show that that wasn't necessarily a dilution issue there, was not a dilution issue. And the District Court specifically found that this at-large system of voting was not maintained for a tenuous purpose of keeping an all-white board. That was not the purpose behind the maintenance of this, this method of election. That was not the purpose behind the maintenance of this, this method of election. Ms. Ayden mentioned Davis, looking to the state, that looked to the state because it involved state courts and state issues there. It wasn't an issue unique to a county commission, something along that line. And I think one of the key questions is the District Court criticized us for trying to turn this into an equal protection case. But the problem with what the District Court has done and what the plaintiffs urge here is it returns us to the 1990s of black maximization known as Black Max plans. And the Shaw line of cases says you can't do that. You can't draw plans primarily based on race. And when a plan is presented to the court that's drawn primarily based on race, that plan cannot be used to show there's a geographically compact community because you have to engage in this kind of block-by-block search for people, as opposed to drawing a plan that is explained by the community and traditional principles otherwise. Finally, just briefly, want to mention that the three-and-a-half-mile distance has been thrown around a lot. That's obviously a fact that would be in dispute because it's 10 miles between the two counties, it's three-and-a-half miles, or cities, it's three miles between the outer distance. But the key is you can't travel that distance inside the district because the District Court, there was white population in between, and Mr. Cooper had to exclude that population to get that district up to the 50% number. So with that, Your honors, we'd urge reversal of the District Court. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, counsel. And we'll move to the next case, and, and...